Update on Ethics Committee and then Kim will give us an update from as Vice Chair.
Whenever.
Here comes Commissioner Lundey. Commissioner Ward must be emptying a trash can somewhere. I want to move out of the way. This is my view of my front porch in Montana. Problem is, it's just got to be on my front porch in my house.
It's beautiful.
Oh, it's beautiful. I mean, I've got a 360 degree view. On the other side of that mountain is Yellowstone.
Where in Montana?
Little town called Belfry, south of Red Lodge. On the other side is Yellowstone National Park, the north entrance.
Okay.
Northeast.
My brother, go ahead. My brother's in Missoula.
A little town Belfry is right on the Wyoming-Montana border. We bought it in 2010, 22 acre, $1,000.
How much?
15.
Oh, my gosh.
22 acres. One minute, it looks like. Michael Covington can join us. Michael, you got anything to say? Hey, Michael, you be speaking any? Can't hear you. You're muted. 3:45, Rob.
Should be in better.
All right, here we go. 3:45, the committee on committee is beginning to meet. And first of all, we got a call to order. It's me. And then I do not see Commissioner Ward available. So if I can get Terry, would you take some notes for us?
Me?
You.
Yes.
All right, so we'll have Terry take notes for us. First order of business is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody got a copy of the minutes, right? I would like to add to Kyle's, Commissioner Ward's minutes. Line four would be a vote at next meeting to remove court subcommittee. And then line five, next meeting and update on Ethics Committee from the Law Department. Is that okay with everybody? Because that's what we're doing. That's what we're doing today. So, all righty, with those additions, I need a motion, please. Oh, oh, sorry, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith?
Second.
I just wanted to check with the Law Department if we need to read the order and vote on that before we start this meeting.
I didn't understand. I've got a bad speaker here. Say again.
I wanted to check to see if we needed to read the order line to conduct the meeting by.
Probably should. Let me grab it here.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
I'll read you the effective parts of this. Just heard my echo there. This is executive order by the Governor, number 5, entered October 28, 2020. And get through all the whereas clauses. The heading on it is "An Order Extending Remote Meetings and Implementing Best Practices Across the State to Promote Transparent Government While Protecting the Health and Safety of Citizens and Government Officials." Getting down through the whereas clauses, the significant, significant wording. He says in subsection one, under A, "As a reasonable measure to protect the safety and welfare of Tennessee while ensuring that government business may continue in a manner that is open and accessible to the public, the provisions of Tennessee Code Title VIII, Chapter 44, Part I, which is the Open Meetings Act, are hereby suspended to the extent necessary and allow a governing body, as defined in Tennessee Code annotated VIII-44-102, and you are considered to be in that governing body, "to meet and conduct its essential business by electronic means as provided for herein, rather than being required to gather a quorum of members physically present at the same location. If the governing body determines that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak, subject to the following conditions." Subsection A, "All meetings of governing body by electronic means under this order shall remain open and accessible to the public by providing real-time live audio or video access to the public, provided that in the case of contested case hearings," which this isn't, so I won't read that. "A clear or audio video recording of the meeting shall be made available to the public as soon as practicable following the meeting and in no event more than two business days after the meeting. And in the public notice required by TCA 844103, governing bodies shall provide information regarding how the public can obtain real-time live access to or broadcast to the meeting, and governing bodies are strongly urged to provide an agenda for the meeting in such notice, and we have done that. Raffilla has done that with regard to this." "Members of governing bodies, staff, and others participating in an electronic meeting by audio means only shall identify themselves as a man reasonably calculated to permit the public to also claim the identity of the person speaking. And some of those, and that might, some of the people may be hearing only by audio. Whenever you raise your hand and talk, probably not to say this, Commissioner Smith or Commissioner Lundey or whatever, and then go on with what you're saying." "This order does not in any way limit quorum, meeting notice, or voting requirements under state law. It does not limit, preempt, or repeal any local government permitting public comment during meetings, except that compliance with such requirements may be accomplished by allowing timely and appropriately submitted comments to be read into the record by a member of the staff." And that is the essence of executive six clause to us.
Do we need? I'll start to say, do we move on that?
Yes. And it's got a voice.
We got a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I need a second? Terry Hill?
Yes, second.
I got a first and second. Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hill to accept the Zoom meeting. All in favor, raise your hand. Or do we have to do the voice vote? Voice vote? Okay, I'll do the, I'll go ahead and call. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Derek?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Lundey?
Yes.
And Commissioner Daley's a yes. So y'all know how you're all the Hollywood squares now, don't you? In order there, so. Next, we need a motion to approve the minutes with the two additions.
So moved.
Second.
That was second by Commissioner Lundey?
Yes.
First, we have a motion to approve a minutes by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Lundey. Roll call. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Derek?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundey?
Yes.
And Commissioner Daley's, yes. So it's all unanimous. Our next order of business is update on the Ethics Committee from the Law Department. I want to squeal some rumors right now. There's no vote today to do away with the Ethics Committee. Got a phone call two or three times, and this is not what this is about today. This is just an update on the Ethics Committee. And we will look if this committee feels like we need to go forward after today, we can present it to the Chair and see what the Chair says. So today is just an informative update on Ethics Committee. So you're up, Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'm not expressing an opinion one way or the other. I'm just going to give you the facts, what the law says and what's happened. The opinions would be a policy matter for this committee and ultimately for commission. So I've sent out to all of you a memorandum that basically sums up everything that with regard to the Ethics Code in the committee. In summary, I'll go back through it. The state law required that all governing bodies, municipalities, and counties come up with an Ethics Code. This was in response to what many of you may be too young to remember, but it was the Tennessee Waltz that happened over in West Tennessee. It had what Tennessee Waltz scandal had been investigated by TBI and FBI, and it put some people in jail. And after that, the legislature came up with the requirement for all governing bodies, municipalities, and counties to come up with an Ethics Code. The essence of the Ethics Code was to set forth certain ethical things that elected people and personnel and employees had to follow. And the legislature charged CTAAS, which is the County Technical Advisory Service, UT, and MTAAS for the cities, to come up with a model code. They came up with different model codes. The difference being that they both had the factors that the legislature required is what had to be in an Ethics Code, that thou shalt not do this, thou shalt not do that. That's what they had. And basically, it had to do with gifts and using your influence, excuse me, had to do with nepotism and those things which you're acquainted with that are in the Knox County, excuse me, Ethics Code. What the County Technical Advisory Service put in was, and this was optional, and discretionary by any county body, and that is having an Ethics Committee to hear complaints. And in the municipal code, such as the city of Knoxville, I had, and I was acquainted with it because I was the city attorney for the town of Lewisville. It just had the code that thou shalt nots. It met the basic requirements of the statute. It did not have an Ethics Committee to hear anything that was a complaint. So in compliance with the one that Knox County adopted back in 2007, they had, they established the Ethics Committee, of which we've had, there's nine members on it. It tells how they're picked and tells their term of their office. It's kind of a redundant thing because everything starts, let's go with the municipal one. The municipal one says that all complaints or anything with regard to ethics goes to the city law director. In that case, in Knoxville, it'd be Charles Swanson. He then investigates. If he determines from the investigation that there is some potential violation, he sends it, if it's a criminal act, he sends it on to Charm Allen, or at that point, it was Randy Nichols, the DA. And if it's something within the structure of the executive branch, he would send it on to the head of that department, say, you need to deal with it. So that's the way that happened. And then we have the same thing in ours where the law director gets the initial complaint. He evaluates it to see if there's any merit to it. And it states in there the basis of which the law director will determine whether there's merit. Basically, what happened, though, in eight years and six, seven months, I've been on there, on the Ethics Committee that I've been working for, the Law Department. We've had, I don't know, I think Carson Daly, you got from Rhonda, a list of complaints, but you've got a list of them. Several of them were just knocked out. At some point, when I would determine that there wasn't anything there, that a political thing, or there weren't any facts that weren't hearsay, I would just not send it on, not causing a problem. Because as put in the head of my Ethics Committee thing, the Supreme Court of the United States has said, everybody's got a right to a good name. That's a constitutional right. And what I was seeing happen was if something was filed, newspaper would pick it up and there would be a headline, "Hondo Accused of Violating Ethics," even if there was no, nothing to it, hearsay, or it was a political thing. And just getting in the paper that where it's being violated, in my opinion, would be a violation of their constitutional right. But when I was evaluating, you guys. One of the local bloggers started to raise cane, said, didn't have authority to investigate. And therefore, all these things, which are public record, once they're filed, they're public record, had to go automatically to the Ethics Committee, which then brought the name up again of innocent people, potentially innocent people. And I would point out, we've had no, in my eight and a half years, nobody has followed the Ethics Code on anything that's come before the, or been filed or come before the Ethics Committee. Now, moving on, the Ethics Committee then is charged with looking at this and having a quasi judicial hearing, in which they determine the guilt or innocence of that particular person who's been accused. So that particular person, if he comes in, as was the case with Bob Thomas and Charlie Bustler, right in the middle of their campaign for the Republican nomination in 20, what was it, 20, at least track of time now, 2018, and had to sit there with the press, looking at them and being accused once again in public. The Ethics Committee had a long involved hearing in which Mr. Thomas and Mr. Bustler had to get and pay for counsel to represent them, totally debunked the accusations made by Mr. Bo Bennett against them and found them to be not guilty. So that went on, but then also during that period, there were allegations made against two other candidates, which had absolutely no, no substance at all. One against Lee Trammell, running for sheriff, and another against Commissioner.
Anders.
Anders, yeah, thank you. Commissioner Anders, who was running for mayor. Of course, that got in the newspaper. Now, whether that had any effect or anything on the election, I don't know. But as you well know, the mayoral election was decided by something like 24 votes. Personally, my only opinion was that that was ill-brought and it shouldn't have been done. It's no opinion on whether the Ethics Committee should meet or should not meet. The Ethics Committee rightly found the right answer, that there was no, there was nothing to that allegation, but the fact was, they had to undergo it. So in my eight years and eight months, or six or whatever it is I've been on there, we've only had two hearings. Well, actually, only one hearing, excuse me. That one hearing had both, it was a combined hearing with both Bustler and Thomas. And that's the only hearing we've had. And going back, I think the only other hearing that actually was before the Ethics Committee was back in 2010, I believe, and it was an allegation against Mike Arms and Mike Ragsdale. And then there was another one against whoever was the chairman of the commission at that time with regard to the Black Wednesday thing, but that went to court. So any court proceeding pulls everything to do with the ethic. Well, that's, that's basically where the ethics thing is, the keeping in mind that there are two parts that are ethics, and one is the Ethics Committee, which you're dealing with, and the other is the code. It's easy enough, if this committee, if the commission wants to do it, to simply go with the code part of it, and you're still in compliance with state law. If this committee and the commission want to continue with the Ethics Committee, that's fine. It's a choice of commission on which way to go. Additionally, we did amend the code because 2001, in 2005, the legislature required all municipalities and county governments to have a fraud hotline, which is confidential. And we've done that. The fraud hotline is we have an outside vendor who collects those calls, makes them untampered, exactly as they can, complaints to Andrea Addus in the Internal Audit Department. All of these items are confidential and they're meant to be that way, so there can be no tax last against anybody that makes an allegation of fraud. So that takes care of the fraud or mismanagement of county property and county funds. And then Andrea Addus is under the statute required to submit her report to the Audit Committee, which she does. Generally, in general terms, as to whether this had any basis or not, if it gets any more detailed than that, it's still confidential, and the state law says the Audit Committee can call an executive session, leave Andrea to find out more details. And here again, anything from the fraud hotline, if there was a criminal act, it goes straight to the district attorney. If it's something other than that, it would go like, especially in the executive branch, it would go to the mayor to deal with. That is, that's a long explanation, but that's basically Code of Ethics and the Ethics Committee. So I'll entertain any questions for them.
We have any questions for the Law Director? I don't see any hands being raised. Courtney, you're on the Ethics Committee, correct?
Yes.
Have you all met yet?
Yes.
Just, can you give us an update on, was this subject brought up at the meeting? Or just give us an update, what's going on at the Ethics Committee?
Well, we met and we voted on our officers, and honestly, that's really all we discussed at our last meeting, because we did not have any issues brought before us.
Okay, good. I've, Kim, and we got the Chair and the Vice Chair. The Chair is Michael Covington and the Vice Chair is Kim Fraser. And I see Michael, it looks like his mic's off. Michael, would you like to give us an update on, Kim and I had been speaking through some email conversations about the, this subject here, and she had sent some information about some, a snip date on your rules. Y'all hear that?
This is Rob with Knox County IT. If everybody that is not speaking would mute their mics, that should help that.
Okay, Michael, you're up.
Can you hear me okay? Cars, can you hear me okay? I think my is on, but I'm not. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you. It's on delay, Michael.
Okay. We have questions about the changes that we made back in 2018. And is it what, okay. And so I think.
Hey, Michael, I hate to interrupt you, but you're just cutting in and out. I'm going to go over to Kim. Are you ready? Can you take over?
Sure.
We'll try to come back to you. We'll get Rob to check your audio.
Do I need to state my name and address?
Please do. Thank you very much.
Kim Fraser, 11835 Couch Mill Road, speaking to you today as the Vice Chair of Knox County Ethics Committee. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for asking us to be here today. And we, Michael and I both appreciate the work that this committee's doing, and we're simply here and to provide any information or answer questions that might assist you in your discussion. After last month's discussion regarding the Ethics Committee, Chairman Covington and I felt that it would be advantageous for us to do some due diligence, just to better understand and address any fundamental concerns or possible area of improvements for consideration to both the Knox County Code of Ethics and the rules of procedures of the Ethics Committee. And I think you all received our statement. And as you can see from that, not only did we spend some time talking with various county resources, we spent some time reviewing state and local legislation pertaining to ethics within government, history of sworn complaints and their outcomes, amendments to both the Code of Ethics and the rules of procedures of the Ethics Committee, and the current means of reporting complaints. And we feel like Knox County has done a great job of following the 2006 state legislation regarding implementing ethical standards related to the acceptance of gifts and disclosure of conflicts of interest, and that Knox County has elevated the county's approach to maintaining and ensuring the highest level of ethical conduct, as well as open and fair due process with the establishment of the 2007 Ethics Committee. Based on the discussion of this committee, we think that it's important to first point out that the Knox County Code of Ethics policies are required by the State Comprehensive Governmental Ethics Reform Act of 2006, and it's codified in TCA 817101, to include rules and regulations regarding limits on and/or reasonable and systematic disclosure of gifts or other things of value received by officials and employees that impact or appear to impact their discretion, and rules and regulations regarding reasonable and systematic disclosure by officials and employees of their personal interests that impact or appear to impact their discretion. It's also important to note that the provisions of the state law, to the extent are more restrictive and they have to control. Additionally, the Ethics Reform Act expressly states that these policies cannot include personnel or employment policies or policies or procedures related to operational aspects of government entities. The Ethics Committee is charged with the task of assuring fundamental fairness in all proceedings involving allegations of a violation of County Code of Ethics. As previously stated, the County Ethics Policy is required to cover the acceptance and disclosure of gifts accepted by officials and employees and the disclosure of conflicts of interest. So accordingly, an ethics complaint received by the County Ethics Committee does not address either the acceptance and/or disclosure of a gift or conflict of interest need not pursued by the Ethics Committee. And we also wanted to touch on the approved amendments to both the rules of the procedure of the Ethics Committee and subsequently the Knox County Code of Ethics that were brought forth for consideration by then Chairman Jonathan Cooper. And these amendments were heard at the June 2018 Ethics Committee meeting. They were approved at the July 2018 Ethics Committee meeting and were approved by Knox County Commission on. and were approved by Knox County Commission on, in August of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, these amendments came after a series of six complaints filed from the year two thousand fifteen to the year two thousand eighteen that were all dismissed with no action. Um, according to our interviews and Chairman Covington's recollection as a sitting member of the committee at that time, these amendments were provided, um, to provide more specific language and clarification of what justifies an ethics complaint, and it expounded the commencement of proceedings. Um, I know that's a lot of information, um, but I hope that it's addressed any questions that you had. And again, we just want to thank Commissioner Daly for including us and asking us for this information. And Chairman Covington and I are happy to try and answer any questions that you all may have.
Hey, Michael, you're on here twice. Have you signed on twice? That may why you're having reverb. You're still muted, Michael. Michael, I hate to interrupt you, but we cannot understand a word you're saying.
But I, but I can't hear myself. Okay, I'm gonna try to delete myself from one of those. I made, I made that location, I think I did it, I think I'm, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, well, let me try to make this quick and, and, and succinct. Uh, uh, Law Director Booke said something very important that I want to, uh, to expound on. And it's this, there has been one real complaint that actually had a hearing. And that hearing, as, uh, as Law Director Booke said, was for Bob Thomas and Charlie Bustler. What ended up happening was that the committee, uh, recognized that that, that particular set of complaints, that pair of complaints needed to be heard. We needed to allow for an investigation to see whether or not there was some, some chance that, that, that complaint needed to move forward. We rightly saw after, uh, hearing and, and, and reviewing the investigation that that complaint did not need to go forward. And so at that hearing, that, um, that case ended up, those cases ended up being dismissed. What I would say a- about the committee itself is that, that we rely on the Law Director's Office to vet these complaints as they come in and to only pass on to us complaints that are, that, that fall within the criteria of what we are established to address. Um, even if the Law Director is reluctant about a particular case and it comes to the Ethics Committee, again, it's the Ethics Committee that will review that and decide if a hearing is necessary. If a hearing is not necessary, then that complaint goes away. And even the, the influence of the news media should not, uh, serve to, um, drag a person's name through the mud if it is determined that the complaint against them has no merit. So there are safeguards in place to make sure that a person's good name is withheld, uh, or is upheld. Um, I think there was some missteps in the way the last complaints were handled, whether it was a, a matter of timing or whether it was a matter of uncertainty as to whether or not the Ethics Committee should actually receive the case or complaint of Bob Thomas and Charlie Bustler. I think moving forward, if a case were to be presented to the Law Director's Office, uh, we can, we can, uh, have a, a, a measure of confidence that, uh, Law Director Booke and his staff would, would know whether or not a case should, is even, even worthy of coming to the Ethics Committee. And I think that the citizenry and the taxpayers should be confident that once a case, uh, is deemed appropriate to come before the Ethics Committee, that the Ethics Committee is prepared to adjudicate those cases as necessary or prevent a hearing from going forward. So I'd like to think that, uh, that the system is good, it is sound. Uh, it does have safeguards and, uh, I would hope that the, uh, committee and that the commission decides to retain the Ethics Committee because I think it does have a, a valuable place in, in our local government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, do we have any questions for the Commissioners from the Commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
Uh, no questions, but just, uh, comments that I, I concur with our Chair and Vice Chair of Ethics Committee that, that, um, uh, thi- this is, this is something that, um, that I strongly believe needs to be in place. I absolutely hear what, um, uh, Mr. Covington said about, um, hopefully the, the, um, checks and balances from this point forward that will be in place so that, uh, anything that is, uh, totally, um, frivolous is, is handled before, uh, it hits the media. Certainly, that's not anything any of us, um, would, would want to have to deal with. And, and, and I, I do concur that there probably were some, um, missteps, to put it, uh, kindly, that, that occurred, uh, when, when this other, uh, situation came up, uh, during, uh, elections. That was just very, very unfortunate.
Thank you, Commissioner, anyone else? Uh, Chair and Vice Chair, I like the email that we got today that says, uh, some of the changes, uh, from the Law Department, the only substantive changes were to add one-year statute of limitations. How did you come up with the one-year statute?
Um, uh, Commissioner Daly, what ended up happening in our review of, of, um, of how the cases or the complaints unfolded was the issue of whether or, first and foremost, firsthand knowledge, firsthand knowledge became a, a, a big issue in terms of whether or not any of the cases should have moved forward. And as we saw, no one filing a complaint had firsthand knowledge. That was the fir-, that was the first check. But the second check was this, and, and, and we put that year in because it was a compromise amongst the committee as relates to how long a person should have to file a complaint. And, and, and the crux of it was this, if you have firsthand knowledge, you have firsthand knowledge in real time, which means if something occurs on January one, you should be able to make that complaint. If that's your intention, you should be able to make that complaint in ninety days. Um, the, uh, the timeframe that we put on, on, and, and the change that we agreed to, we thought was reasonable, uh, to allow a person who is a, a witness to or having firsthand knowledge of something would have a reasonable amount of time to make their complaint. So, so that was the, that was the genesis for, for placing that timeframe on it. But it was the firsthand knowledge that drove that. And, and again, no one filing a complaint amongst the complaints that we had in twenty eighteen and seventeen, none of those individuals had firsthand knowledge. Or none of those individuals understood what was meant by firsthand knowledge. Uh, I think a lot of people thought if they read it in the newspaper, that was firsthand knowledge. Or if they saw a picture of something at a dinner or a presentation, that, that was firsthand knowledge. But the committee recognized and defined that that is not firsthand knowledge. So regardless of, of what the, the circumstance is bringing a complaint about, if you have firsthand knowledge, that timeframe is the timeframe that we feel, we felt was necessary for a person that had firsthand knowledge.
That ninety days is, uh, if I witness someone committing an ethics violation and to come before the Ethics Committee, you need to be, it's not hearsay evidence, you need to be witness to that. I should be able to do that within ninety days. You mentioned ninety days and to me, a year is way too long. If you're going to do, if you're going to do, and all I'm asking you to do is look at that, go back and look at that, you know, ninety days is still, that's, that's a long time. And if you're really, if someone has really done an ethics complaint or an ethics violation, it shouldn't take a year for that person to come up, in my opinion, okay? Uh, now, as far as the, I served on the ethics, I was, uh, one of the, uh, I guess you want to say the founding members. And, uh, it's not an easy job. When you got somebody's, you know, life in your hands and their, their reputation and it's, it's not an easy job and I appreciate both of you doing that. So I'm not here to tell you that I'm not here to do away with the Ethics Committee. All we were doing today is reviewing the Ethics Committee and what Ethic Committee, the Ethics Committee is all about. And I love that these changes, now I would, me personally, as a Commissioner, I would ask that you go back and look at that one-year's of, uh, limitations and make it ninety days. I would love to see ninety days, six months at the max. Because if you're going to file a ethics complaint, you're not waiting a year to do that. If you do, that, my personal opinion is there's a motive behind it. So.
Well, let me say this, um, and, and you and I have, we, you and I tend to agree on most things in terms of logic and, and basic common sense. And, uh, what I'd like to add to this is, uh, I was on the ninety-day side of it. Uh, the, the, the one-year, uh, was a compromise. It would have been better had we gone with six months. But I could give you every, uh, every assurance that when we, uh, when we meet again, we will address this as a committee, um, and we'll have to educate, uh, and, and familiarize folks on the committee who were not involved, uh, in the previous cases. We'll have to kind of bring them up to speed on where we are and where we were and, and, and what, what the basis of our decision was. So what I'd like to do is to, is to commit to that, uh, during this committee meeting. Uh, we don't meet again until February. Um, but, uh, but we will put that on, uh, new business and, and address that. And, and, uh, this time around, I think you'll be pleased with, uh, with the, uh, the compromise that we'll make. I think at, at, at the outside, six months is more than enough time, more than enough time. We'll discuss it and, uh, and we'll get right back to, to, uh, I guess this committee or the commission and let you know what we arrived at. But, but that should be changed and I hope, hope we can change it, uh, when we meet again.
Well, thank you. There's, this committee's not going anywhere, I, I'm sure of that. I don't think that we would even, I would like to wrap this committee up today and, uh, do a summary and get it to the Chairman. So, uh, if there's not any other questions for the Chair or Vice Chair of Ethics, uh, we're, we're going to move on. Terry, is that a question?
It, it, it's a clarification on my minutes. So to be clear, um, uh, Mike and Kim, it, it sounds like you tried to redefine, uh, firsthand knowledge and you at this point are looking at, but have not made a recommendation on the timeframe involved in, um, in, um, filing an ethics complaint, is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Hill. And, um, uh, we'll rely on, um, uh, Law Director Booke to give us some guidance as to how we go about approaching making that adjustment. Um, and I think that the adjustment is something that, given a, a, an adequate explanation, I think that's something that we can make happen in our next meeting.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, Law Director?
Uh, I agree with everything Mr. Covington had said with regard to the past meeting. There were some other procedural things which very much troubled me. We, uh, on the Charlie Bustler, Bob Thomas issue, we sent out our investigator, our department has its own investigator, uh, former FBI agent and, uh, then was at Oak Ridge, very competent. He went out and did a thorough investigation of the allegations, which were hearsay, allegations against Mr. Thomas and, uh, Mr. Bustler. And what he came back with was there was nothing. And so that was the opinion, we said it shouldn't go forward. However, the press picked up on the fact that there had been a complaint filed. There was a very hot contested election going on with the mayor. And, uh, so then the Chairman at the time said, well, we've got to hear this. So that's the way that happened and I, that disturbed me, uh, greatly because of, I thought it was unfair to the campaigners. And when we were talking about changes, uh, Mr. Covington, uh, reflected the ninety days as opposed to the one year. Uh, I was along with Mr. Covington, should be ninety days. If you can't do it within ninety days, don't do it. But the other one that very much troubled me was it had been used now and it had been used earlier back in two thousand nine or ten, uh, for political reasons. And that disturbed me greatly. I thought it was unfair, it was unfair to Mr. Thomas, Mr. Bustler. And I wanted to change the procedural rules that no complaints would be accepted during a certain time leading up to an election. Because they can still do that. Somebody can just throw something in, whether it's frivolous or not, and then that person's name gets in the paper like Lee Trammell and, uh, and, and Thomas and Bustler. And they didn't do anything, but they're out there and the press has a heyday with it. And, and that, that was not adopted by the committee. And I think that's very important. I do not think this committee should in any way, or this Code of Ethics should in any way be used for political advancement of one person or one cause. So I, I agree with what Mr. Covington said, but I think there are additional, if this committee stays in, additional limitations that should be put on procedural rules.
Mr. Chair, do you agree to that, to revisit that?
I do recall, um, Commissioner Daly, I do recall that being a bone of contention when we had the discussion about, uh, the timeframe leading up to an election. And, and I think the members of the committee, as I, as I recall, uh, they, they were just un, uncommitted about whether or not there should be a, a limitation placed on the filing of a complaint. And, and, and I think the sticking point was this, if the, if the violation occurs within six months of, of an election occurring, then are we giving the, are we giving the complaining party or, or the, the plaintiff in the case, are we giving them a, a reckless amount of time to, to file their complaint if the, if the incident occurred, say, six months before an election actually occurs? And I think that the discussion kind of went in the direction of, well, if the candidate commits a viable or, or commits a violation of the ethics codes, then they are subject to a complaint being filed to them because of the timing of the commission of the act. That was, that was the sticking point. And, um, and, uh, Law Director Booke i- is right. That it, it was a bone of contention. Um, it is something that could be revisited, but I must say, if, if a violation occurs a, a month before the election or six months before the election, the candidate is subject to, to the scrutiny of the act, not the timing of when they committed the act. And so if you've got firsthand knowledge of something that a candidate, who may not have even declared six months before an election, if that candidate does something, uh, six months before an election or primary occurs, and then three months later, they, they take out a petition and they, and they get themselves on the ballot, then the committee was feeling as though they were subject to the rules of the E- Ethics Committee regardless of the timeframe from, from the occurrence of the incident to the election. And, and we could not reconcile that, we, we just could not make that make sense. None of the cases that we had fell into that category, not one of them. Because they were hearsay, they were not firsthand knowledge. And, and there was a trip. It lapsed from when the, the, the occurred to when the complaint was filed. Um, it is something that we can revisit, but I, but, but I am, uh,
Michael, you're cutting out, I'm missing.
Wanting to be very clear, if a violation occurs within the timeframe. If the, it occurs so close, okay. Well, what I will say, if, if you can hear me, is we will revisit this issue at our February meeting and we'll try to get back to you with, uh, with, uh, with the, what we came up with. But, uh, when we, when we broach the subject of the timeframe, that's an easy one. When we start talking about the timing of when an incident occurs, that may be a little bit more challenging.
You know, uh, the timeframe, the ninety days to me is, is good. But my most, my biggest concern is, is hearsay evidence. No hearsay evidence. The person that files that complaint needs to witness. And if the Law Department says, their investigator says that it was hearsay evidence, there was no truth to it, it shouldn't be, the name should not even be brought up. So that's what, that's my personal opinion, okay? Uh, we're going to run short of time, so I'm going to go ahead and try to wrap this up. Any, uh, any last questions? Uh, Law Director?
I, 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 I've still got what I think was a terrible injustice to Mr. Bustler, uh, and, and Lee Trammell and, and, uh, everybody that had just the filing of that thing. When somebody's already picked up a petition and they're running. When somebody's already picked up a petition and they're running, that is not right. In my mind, that is not right. That is unfair, and it shouldn't be countenanced in any way.
All right, so we're going to, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, uh, take that up in February, and, uh, I'll probably come and sit in and listen to the meeting too, if you don't care, if you don't mind, so. All right, thank you both for being here. Thank you for serving. I know y'all lose sleep over these decisions like I do, so. All right, uh, next on our agenda is, uh, the removal vote on the.
Carson, if I may, uh, you didn't, I don't think you saw my hand. Just, um, I, um, clarification on process, uh, Mr. Law Director. Any changes that this, um, committee, uh, the Ethics Committee recommends in, in their rules or their procedures? Is this something that has to come before the commission? Or is this something that they can do at their discretion and, and bring merely their, um, uh, their document? How, how, what, what is procedurally, how does that go?
Commission has to approve it. So if it has something that they want to change in their procedural rules, they recommend it to County Commission.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, next order of business is to, uh, have the vote on removal or abolishing the court subcommittee, which we all agree that it's not necessary for Mike Cameron. So I would entertain a motion from someone. Terry Hill is my motion. Do I have a second? Throw, wave a hand? And second by Commissioner Lundey. Any discussions? Oh, discussion, okay. I'm gonna go ahead, Terry, and do the roll call. Uh, first is Terry.
Uh, yes.
Courtney?
Yes.
Randy? I seen it, yes.
He's on me.
And, uh, Commissioner Lundey?
Yes.
And Commissioner Daly says yes. So that's five ayes and no no's, so it passes. Uh, the next order of business or any other business is my plans are to wrap this committee up today unless someone sees a necessity to go ahead. I will do a summary of what we've done, the committees and how many committees there are. I will get that summary hopefully in the next week or so. Send it to Drew. Send it to you. I'll let you all look over it. See if you want to add anything to it or take away. Then we'll get it to, uh, the Chairman, hopefully for the January meeting, the, you know, suggestions and, uh, Mr. Law Director, since we voted to, uh, to abolish the court subcommittee, that will have to be put in for a resolution before commission. We can do that in January, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what we'll do. So if it's, if that's okay with everyone, I'll do the summary and get it to everyone so they can look over it and then, and refine it or whatever we need to do, then get it to the Chairman. Is that agreeable? Lot ahead?
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, any other business? All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 The Chairman says that's adjourned. Thank you. See you in a few minutes.